John?
Okay, I'm going to call to order the special board meeting on December 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM at Hubble Middle School. Mr. Hanlon, would you please call and roll?
Ms. Booton? Ms. Crabtree?
Here.
Ms. Erickson? Okay. Rob Hanlon here, Dave Long? Jim Matheson? Brad Paulson?
Here.
Jenna? Jenna Erickson is on the phone with us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanlon. First, as a pledge of allegiance, Mrs. Crabtree, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a special meeting we called after last week's regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Both agenda items are follow-ups to last week's discussion. We will consider and act on a proposal to incorporate a saliva-based surveillance screening strategy to our ongoing mitigation efforts. We will also receive an update on local metrics and select a return to our in-person hybrid learning date for our middle school and high school students that choose that option. And as I stated last week, a primary objective is to bring students back to school in an environment we can maintain through the end of the school year. Next up on the agenda is public comments, and as I said, we're going to do this the same as we did last week. Due to the ongoing pandemic and Tier Three mitigations that remain in place limiting the number of individuals in the space, we are again temporarily mending our public comment procedures for this meeting to allow comments to be made in person or emailed to the board and acknowledged in the meeting tonight. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment in person will have the opportunity to do so, but will only be allowed in the meeting room when they are called to provide their public comment. A sign-up sheet was made available at the entrance to Hubble Middle School until 7:00 PM tonight. Community members will remain in the waiting area until called into the meeting room by myself, the board president. While community members will not be able to remain in the meeting, at the meeting in person, the board meeting will be available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. We do have six members of the community sign up for in-person public comment, and due to the fact that people making public comment in person are not in the room to hear me read our standard statement, the following statement has been provided to them in writing as they wait for the opportunity to speak. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per board policy, we've allocated 30 minutes for public comments, and comments on any one subject may be limited to 20 minutes. The board may shorten the time allocation for each person to less than three minutes to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please include your name and whether you are resident of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mrs. Crabtree, we'll time the comments and raise her hand when the three-minute mark is up, at which time we ask you wrap up your comments. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. So first on our list for public comments is Kevin Nickel.
Hello, my name is Kevin Nickel. My wife and I have five kids in the school district. My wife is in health care, working diligently since the pandemic started. Our youngest is at Hawthorne doing well. He's in school with teachers daily. He knows what is expected of him, and he gets it done. He would be better off a full day of school, but he is doing so much better than our three middle schoolers. We have three in eighth grade, and they're struggling. Assignments are being missed, they're frustrated. They miss one-on-one portion of the class that occurs as a teacher is present physically with them, allowing them to ask their questions. They are staring at a video for 25-minute periods where the curriculum is dumbed down due to shortened class time. They do not have the executive function and skills to properly organize themselves and their assignments remotely, especially when those assignments are not assigned in a consistent manner. My oldest is at North. She's doing well, school-wise, because she's now My oldest is at North. She's doing well, school-wise, because she's now mature enough to organize herself properly during remote learning. But she sits in her room all day, alone, with no community. She's had competitive sports from her. I don't blame the teachers at all. They're struggling to teach to a video screen. Our teachers are not being put in a situation that allows success. They are unable to excel and properly utilize their skills and talents for which they've trained. When an employee cannot define success in their job, that reflects on leadership. Wheaton Christian, Wheaton Academy, St. Mike's, Timothy Christian, even District 200's TCD program are all open and in-person with minimal effect. We should praise them as examples and learn from their successes. I'm a Pittsburgh Steeler fan, and I'm a big fan of their head coach, Mike Tomlin. He speaks clearly and concisely. He's a great leader. In their last three games, the Steelers' receivers have dropped over 15 passes, which they should have caught, leading to two different losses. When asked about this, Coach Tomlin simply responded, "I expect guys to make routine plays routinely." They can catch the ball, or they can get replaced by those who will catch it. He gets right to the basics, expecting his players to do their job or they will be replaced. So I asked the school board, "Do your job. Allow these kids to be properly educated. Put these kids physically in school." It places CDC, World Health Organization, and many others claim it's the safest place for kids to be. Please go talk to the teachers. Seek them out. Learn how badly they want to be in classroom. I asked the district leadership to do their job. Stop discussions on expensive and silly-named surveillance testing, and let the doctors and professionals deal with that. These same people are telling you to open and teach the kids in person. Vaccines are rolling out now. In fact, my wife gets her first dose tomorrow. I asked the teachers to encourage their teachers to teach in person, use their amazing skills in the classroom where they belong and where they want to be. And I asked all of you to do your job and open the schools immediately. Let routine plays be done routinely, and open the schools now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Next up for public comment is Diane Gallo.
Good evening. To the District 200 board members, thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to give public comment. I've written to you before, and I've tried to ensure that my comments were positive and supportive. So forgive me if tonight I deviate a little bit from that position, but hope you can appreciate the extraordinary amount of frustration and impatience I feel as I watch my daughters, last days as a student here in District 200, get wiped away. These days of her senior year will never return, and there will be no making up next year. She feels cheated and has given up hope that she will be able to return to celebrate what she's accomplished with her classmates. When I hear the board members and members of the community say, "We want the kids back in school," those words feel increasingly disingenuous. When science now supports the safety and need for kids to return, I say enough. Enough already. To me, this is now is clear choice, and it should be an unconditioned one. When I heard of the board's seemingly random decision to move forward with surveillance testing, frankly, I was mortified. While I have many questions and concerns about this decision, I cannot help but believe the board is acting just to act, to do something, anything, without very careful consideration of several important factors, not the least of which is asking why. What is the purpose of surveillance testing? In my opinion, the board has acted in an opaque fashion without open and transparent dialogue. Here are just a few of my questions. Was this a sole-source bid with a surveillance company, and if so, under what authority was that decision made? What due diligence or vetting was done of the company selected, and what comparators were used, if any? Given what is at stake, was an outside independent consultant used who had expertise in surveillance testing used to evaluate that decision? What controls will be in place to ensure data integrity and the data security of our children's PHI, Protected Health Information, that will be collected from those saliva samples? Will parents be informed of such security risks, of such security measures, as well as other reassurances that protect the children's PHI? Will parents be expected to sign waivers for the use of their children's PHI for the purpose and for what it should be used? What is the stability of the company District 200 plans to contract with? Does that agreement expressly limit the use of PHI data collected from our children? Is the board aware that there are many companies that sell de-identified health information for profit? Smaller companies may not have invested in data security infrastructure to protect against data breach from the dark web or other nefarious actors. I'm sure you know that this week there was a massive data breach that occurred in our country. How is the board and District 200 prepared to guarantee security of that PHI as well as the appropriate use of that data? Is the liability something you're willing to accept? Assuming the board will make surveillance optional, why would District 200 then require children to submit to such testing in order to participate in activities? Is that really optional at that point? And as parents, we have to choose to ignore some of these questions, as noted, as I've noted, versus allowing children to get back and be engaged. I'm left with wondering these and many more questions, and want you to understand that as a parent, this is a black hole that could have significant consequences for our children, and for what purpose, I wonder. So forgive me if I am left with extreme disappointment and distrust that this is the best the board can do to return children to school. Look around at the private schools in our community and other states, public schools in other states, that have been in full-time school for months. We can do better. Let's get the kids back without this added surveillance risk. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Dr. Kelly Gross.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kelly Gross. I'm a parent of two children in this district, one in elementary VA, one in hybrid middle school. My children have attended three different schools. For the last five years, my husband and I have run voluntarily a year-round program for STEAM education at Emerson Elementary. I'm deeply invested in what this district does, but I have to tell you that last week I was concerned about the board considering committing significant resources to the surveillance and return to school. And the reason for that is because I think that this board is not really addressing the needs of VA students in elementary. Last week, in our presentation, Dr. Schuler stated that there were no unfilled substitute absences. Now, he was referring to in-person, and I commend the board and the district for filling those spots. But in VA, there is a continual problem of unfilled substitutions. When teachers are absent, students are left to work asynchronously. Students are youngest first grade, often for multiple days at a time. In addition to this, another concern I have about VA is the lack of aides. In our elementary schools, in Jefferson, we have aides. And those aides, while they may be there to support students with disabilities and students who are English-language learners, they help provide small-group instruction, reducing the group size, so that the regular classroom teacher can differentiate and meet the needs of the other learners in the classroom. There is no aide in my daughter's class. There's no aide in most of the Jefferson preschool elementary classes. So my daughter is not receiving differentiated instruction at her level, because the teacher, who is doing a phenomenal job, is, in my opinion, overwhelmed, and is not getting the same resources as if she was teaching in person. The last thing that I want to bring up is that at the beginning of the year, the district canceled the PACE language arts program for the elementary students. State law for accelerated and gifted students requires that you provide a written plan for accommodations for students who are gifted learners. We received no such plan. And when I reached out to both my daughter's teacher and her principal, I was told they had been told of no plans being made. So my daughter, who is a gifted learner, has been increasingly disenfranchised by her virtual academy experience. Though the district has successfully done a great job with elementary, we, at this point, have honestly considered moving her back to in-person, but there's no space. So if the district is going to move money towards surveillance and hybrid, I urge you to consider these other issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gross. Next up is Bryce Can.
Good evening. My name is Bryce Can. I'm the president of Wheaton Warrenville Education Association, representing 1,100 members here in District 200, including the 100 or so that you saw outside tonight as you walked in. Back on September 23rd, I spoke to you about the plan to return students to school. I was excited about bringing students back, but I was here to cite collective concerns our staff had about the proposed return date and some concerns with the hybrid schedule. Unfortunately, the return played out in a manner none of us wanted, and I'm here tonight, again, with similar concerns. Since March, we've worked collaboratively with the district to solve these sorts of problems. Recently, for some reason, this has stopped. This joint problem-solving is not taking place in the same manner any longer. Instead, the voices of educators, who work directly with our students, are not a consistent part of the process. We need to return to the collaborative processes we were using back during the summer, so that educators are involved in this problem-solving process. Our current successful elementary schedule is just one example of our joint success when we're collaborative. We want to help. We want our students back in school. But teaching and learning during a pandemic is radically different, and teachers need to have the chance to tell you this. We want our students to succeed, and we want solutions to the problems that we encounter. But when these solutions are thrown upon us without our input or feedback, it undermines the work that we are already doing to solve these same problems. Ask us. Talk with us. Listen to us. Do not make us develop constant workarounds to these so-called solutions that are handed down. We believe a February 1st return date makes the most sense. It allows for the current semester to finish under the current schedule and provides students and teachers a consistent model to complete the grading period. It would also allow us to work together to develop improvements to the hybrid schedule that would be more sustainable than before. We're concerned that if we simply move ahead without any reflection on this plan, we're destined to repeat our prior experiences. February 1st is not as quick a timeline as anybody wants, but we all want the next schedule change, which will be the fourth one this year, to be our last. We're also concerned about the money being discussed tonight for surveillance testing. We appreciate your continued commitment to the safety of our staff and students, but this amount of money would be better spent in other capacities. This testing would be helpful, more helpful in a targeted use with our early childhood and our other special education programs, where physical distancing is impossible, not as a blanket 612 solution. We do not see the value, since it's largely dependent on it being a voluntary opt-in. We have not agreed on everything along the way, but usually when we have not agreed, we knew that we had been heard and our ideas contemplated. We can't say that anymore. We know this is not who we are as a district, and hopefully we can get back to solving these important problems together. When we work in collaboration, we're at our best. This is the only way we'll get through this challenging and stressful time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Can. Next up is Melina Neves.
Oh, he's much taller than I am. Hello, Melina Neves, but thank you. Hi. My name is Melina Neves, and I am not a parent. I am not a student, and I am not a teacher. But I do have people who I know and love in all of these roles, and I want what's best for all of them. I think schools should reopen eventually, when it's safer and sustainable. I don't believe that January 4th is a realistic or safe open date. It is an unnecessary risk. People will travel. People are traveling. They will want to see their family. They will leave the state. They will hug their loved ones. They will contribute to the spread of COVID. It's reckless, but honestly, I don't blame them. It's been a hard year. If you have people traveling up until January 3rd, hugging their loved ones, January 4th is not a safe date to bring everyone together. If this change is decided now to open on the 4th with 19 days' warning, I know many teachers will spend the majority of their break re-planning for the 4th to make sure their students get a quality education. Teachers have been working incredibly hard. I need a break, too. Not being in school is indescribably hard on students' emotional, educational, and psychological development. They're frustrated. They're struggling. But they are all in the same boat. The rest of the children in the U.S. are not soaring ahead and becoming better than the children in this district. I appreciate your consideration of everything you've heard and will hear tonight and the effect of opening school will have on students, teachers, and the community's spread of COVID.
Thank you. And our last person signed up for in-person public comment is Cassie Cap.
Thank you for lowering that. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Cassie Cap. I do have three students in the district. And first off, I want to mention, I'm going to speak loud because I listen to this every single time it is on YouTube, all right? And it is the, it's very hard to understand. So, but the first thing I want to say is I love my teachers that my kids have. I have nothing bad to say about any of the teachers who they have. They are responsive. They do help. They are doing everything possible to make sure that my kids are trying to have the best learning experience, and not even mentioning some of the coaches. However, with that being said, today, as you all know, at our local hospitals, the vaccine was delivered, and they were all giving, administered the vaccine today for COVID. And everybody knows, with the numbers that you have supplied to us, it shows to us that it didn't warrant for us to shut the school. But again, there is risk with everything. So now, with this vaccine, and now that people are administering them, I think it's time for us to get the kids back into school. So today, I was very upset because he meant that we may not be going back to school for quite some time. And I just couldn't handle it anymore. I see my middle schooler struggling, and he's a bright student. I advocate no more screen time. This is not healthy for the brains of our young children. Neurosciences say it all the time. So today, a nice gentleman today responded to me, and he basically put this in a nice way. So I'm going to read it very quickly, because I know I only have a limited amount of time, and I love to talk. So I asked, "Why isn't the teachers doing more to get our students back to school?" But it's not the teachers. It's the union. And again, I love all of my teachers, and I appreciate the jobs that you guys do. This is not easy. I get it. Because you have to make decisions for everyone. But I'm just going to read this. I asked, "Why aren't we back in school?" It says, "Why someone sells out the future of their kids for the fear of a narrative around statistically unlikely scenario is odd to me. There's also a blind faith in the fairy tale that all educators are committed to providing exceptional education to the kids. Some are for sure, clearly there are few who are not. Finally, there is a contentment factor that..." Finally, there is a contentment factor that grows like this. Of course, the teachers in the district want what is right for the kids. They're, they're the experts, and they know more than me. So I need to be content whatever they are doing and trust that their best is the right thing to do is just good enough. It says, the student dynamic that has been masterly crafted over time such that is difficult to attack without being attacked by the followers of the dynamic. Read the mission statement of the union. No mention of the student experience, nothing about the commitment to our students, nothing. The educator slash student bond truly should be sacred, but it is not. The union's position is the issue of getting kids back in class full days every day is a proof of the reality that demonstrates that the kids definitely do not come first. And this is the problem I have. The damage was done to the students since the back half of 2019, which is irreparable. It says, researchers have quantified the setback and the psychological impact, which is also documented. We have a full-blown crisis that is created by a virus. It is, it's not created by the virus, it's created by leadership. Reaction, a bizarre interpretation of data and completely twisted risk slash reward analysis that locks the grounding beyond irrational and frenzied emotional state propagated by misplaced fear. We should have fear for the future of our students. We need to get back to school. And we need full time. And again, most of the parents in our district, we have the most respect for you.
Mrs. Cap, can you wrap up your comments or?
That's all I have to say. I'm done. Sorry, sorry, sorry. But thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that concludes the people who signed up ahead of time for in-person public comment. Community members not attending this meeting in person and who wanted to provide comments to the Board of Education had the opportunity to send an email to the board between the posting of this agenda and 5:00 today. All board members receive and read these emails. To be acknowledged, emails were to include in the subject line that the email was intended for acknowledgement at the December 15, 2020 Board of Education meeting. These emails will be acknowledged but not read and then documented in the board communication log. During this time, we received, I'm guessing, looks like about 15 emails that were specifically noted. And so those emails came over the last two days, on December 14th and December 15th, from Sharon Weeks, who wrote about reopening feedback, Heather Berea, reopening feedback, Laura Ramey, reopening feedback, Leila Krajewski on reopening feedback, Brian Zeglin, reopening feedback, Melissa Nickel on reopening feedback, Elizabeth Kennedy reopening feedback, Brooke Weston on surveillance testing, Mark Doherty on reopening feedback, Tracy Kantowski on surveillance testing, Cheryl Koenig reopening feedback and surveillance testing, Angela with a last name not provided, WWEA in-person learning, Jennifer Mattos on the middle school virtual academy, Haley Galivan, Galivanavitz on reopening feedback, I sure didn't pronounce that right, and then Brad Vertress on reopening feedback and surveillance testing. So that concludes the public portion, the public comment portion of our agenda tonight. Next up, we have two action items on our agenda, both of which will be led by Dr. Shuler and his team. First is the approval of the agreement with safeguard surveillance. Dr. Shuler?
Tonight was scheduled as a special board meeting, as Mr. Paulson mentioned in the introduction tonight, following our meeting last Wednesday, December 9th. The purpose of the meeting tonight is twofold. One, to set a return date for our secondary students to our in-person learning programs and to discuss mitigations that will be in place to support that return. Specifically, we'll discuss an additional mitigation strategy, surveillance testing, that was introduced publicly last week, and that the board will be asked to consider a recommendation that would add that as a mitigation to our secondary return-to-school plans. Following that discussion, we'll consider the return to our in-person for our middle and high school students and staff. As a reminder, we presented three options last week, including January 4th, January 11th, and January 19th. In the days between our meeting last Wednesday and tonight, the board and administration has received considerable feedback on the two topics being discussed tonight. Teachers represented by WWEA have clearly shared with the board their thoughts on the return date and their concerns that February 1st, the end of the first semester, has not been shared as an option. Teachers have also shared their desire to have other schedules considered, to shorten the day and eliminate lunch. They've identified concerns with how schedules best support and provide time for necessary student supports and consider screen time. Finally, they've offered specific feedback on hybrid models and the instructional considerations that impact the important work that they do in the classroom. We've also received considerable feedback from parents. Parents have offered specific concerns about the impact of students not being in school. We've heard feedback on the social-emotional impact and toll on our students when the in-person opportunities were paused. We have heard concerns about adjustments that need to be made to the hybrid plan to support students, both on synchronous and asynchronous days. Virtual Academy parents have articulated concerns with schedule adjustments and the remote schedule if the hybrid plans resume. And we've heard concerns from parents about screen time and the impact on students. Parents and staff have raised and asked thoughtful questions about the proposed testing program, associated costs and value it will provide to the school district. Many of the messages on all sides of the discussion have included a plea to follow the science and a strong desire for the board and administration to listen. As we present the update tonight, I can assure you that we are listening. While it's not possible to do everything that's being asked in the correspondence to the board and administration, we are listening. I respect and thank everyone for taking the time to share your individual stories and feedback. It's clear that the pandemic has been difficult for many of our families and staff members. Tonight, we will continue to move the discussion forward with our board, and we'll do so with a sincere desire to make the best decisions that we can for our community with the information that we have. And so as a way of a reminder of our, my on here, Jahan, there we go. Our agenda for tonight is we're going to start with an update on safeguard surveillance and surveillance testing. We're going to come back in and request the board from the last meeting and update a few of the data points since that meeting. Mrs. Murphy is again going to give an update on some of the progress in our teaching and learning updates, and then we're going to make a final recommendation on the return to that hybrid plan. So I want to start with surveillance testing, a little bit of history before I even jump into the why. While we discussed this for the first time with the board at your last meeting on December 9th, that was certainly not the beginning of the exploration into testing as a mitigation strategy for us. It's something that in our weekly meetings with superintendents in the DuPage County Health Department, the topic of testing has come up many times from early in the pandemic. And I think along with many other mitigation strategies, it's evolved as opportunities in testing has, has evolved. And so we brought it to the board publicly for the first time, but there was some feedback, I know, offered both tonight and some of the email to the board suggesting that this just appeared to pop up at the last meeting, but I can assure you it's something we've been studying for a while. In fact, in early November, I went and heard a presentation on surveillance testing at another local school board where I first learned about the option that we brought to the board tonight, and again, put an early eye on it as a support to our mitigation strategy. So why do it? Why do you test, do COVID testing in schools? One, it identifies potential cases of COVID-19 early, right? We know we can identify symptomatic cases, but we cannot identify asymptomatic cases. And so it is an opportunity to do that early. When you do that, when you identify both symptomatic and asymptomatic cases, I do believe strongly that you drive down overall rates in the community by alerting those that need to quarantine and remove from the school environment. I do believe it can reduce school closures and allow for more in-person instruction and allow for safe reopening of schools that have been temporarily shut down. And CDC, in its consideration of school-based testing, does suggest that there's a place for testing, and one of them is at times when you're at higher levels of community transmission as an additional mitigation strategy. In school testing, presumptuous positives are often treated as positive for the school, again, for the purpose of isolation, quarantine, and contact tracing, allows us to execute that earlier. And important to note, though, that testing supplements, but does not take the place of other mitigation strategies. So we're going to identify in a moment or remind again the core mitigation efforts that are in place in our schools. This is not intended to take the place of those mitigation strategies. It is intended to provide an additional layer of support, in this case, for our secondary schools. So our current mitigation strategies that we've talked to the board many times about, universal masking, you have a policy that requires it when you're inside school buildings, physical distancing, we continue to adhere to physical distancing, both inside, outside of classrooms, that's not going to be relaxed, hand hygiene, the importance of cleaning and sanitizing classrooms and objects that are used in classrooms, daily symptom screening and contact tracing, right? Those are core mitigation strategies that have been in place since the beginning of the school year. And again, I think as the board has heard many times, we've been successful with those mitigation strategies. So adding a layer of mitigation or proposing to add a layer of mitigation at the secondary level does not mean we have not been successful. It provides an additional layer, especially at moments of higher transmission. So there are three types of testing that are often recognized when it comes to COVID-19. Diagnostic test is a test that's given to a person that has signs or symptoms of COVID-19 or recent exposure. Diagnostic tests do have to be approved by the FDA, as they do provide that definitive diagnosis that somebody is COVID-positive. Diagnostic tests, based on the lab in which they're run and the support that sits behind them, tend to be the most expensive of testing options, right? When you're looking at tests. Screening tests are meant to identify infected individuals who are asymptomatic and without known exposure, but screening tests, much like surveillance that we're going to talk about in a moment, would result in anybody who's being, being identified as needing a diagnostic test for confirmation. So a screening test does not provide that official diagnosis. Surveillance testing, the option that we talked to you about at the last meeting and are going to talk to you again about tonight, is testing that's given to larger populations to measure community outbreak or community spread. Specimens and specimens in surveillance testing are de-identified when they go to the lab for testing, meaning that school district provides to the lab just the specimens, but they are de-identified, so there's no individual student identifying information as a part of the sample that goes forward. Again, like screening, anybody that's identified through surveillance testing as having a clinically significant finding would need a diagnostic test for confirmation, but it is the least expensive based on the way that that test is run. And again, I want to reiterate, you heard from Dr. Campbell last week, and he provided information both to the board and information that we uploaded with the board packet tonight. It does not mean that the test is not valid or that the test is not being run with effective science behind it, but the fact that that testing, that surveillance testing is not going through, the laboratory requirement to be diagnostic testing in and of itself brings down the price tag, makes it a more viable option as you're looking at it as a universal mitigation. So what are a couple of the factors that I think a school district should consider when they're thinking about a testing program? Of course, you want to take into account the potential for false positives, false negatives. You want to make sure that the data you're getting back is useful, and if there are high numbers of false positives or negatives, that brings into concern. You want to make sure that logistically, you can do it, right? That the process for distributing, collecting, labeling, and reporting is doable in the cycle of, of school. We want to be thoughtful of the turnaround time, so we want to make sure, especially in the surveillance perspective, that the results come back in time that we can utilize them and act on them to support both individual students and the system. And of course, we want to be cognizant of cost. In this case, I mentioned cost for the district because we are not transferring that cost to individual families or staff. The district is proposing this as a plan. We need to be cognizant of equity, right? In testing, to make sure that this is available and supports our entire student population. And again, we need to be mindful of any certification or approvals that would be required of the district. There are certain types of testing that require CLIA certification for an individual school district. Surveillance testing does not, because we are not administering the test, we're running the test on site. We do not need to have a CLIA certification to run surveillance testing. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Solagi and let him walk you through some slides specifically on how safeguard works, and then I'm going to come back and pick up at the, at the end.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Shuler. Yeah, over the next few slides, I intend to walk you through some, some of the logistics and processes around it. So this slide here really denotes how safeguard surveillance's processes workflow works. So really, six steps that are a part of the operations around surveillance testing. The first step is that a student or an employee simply chooses or opts in to the surveillance, right? By signing consent or giving consent. At that point, as a school, we are providing barcoded tubes to students, the student and/or, to students and/or employees. The student and/or employee then provides a sample, a saliva sample at the collection site. The next sample is, is that we take those samples in test tubes, they are delivered to the lab, which is within the Chicago. And those results then are delivered back to us prior to the next school, to the next day. And then any student that has a clinically significant reading, a presumed positive, is notified. We would contact trace that as well, but the isolation rules around our, our pieces would fall into place there. So that, those are the pieces. Now, there are a lot of logistics that fall behind that operationally, but those are the big picture pieces of what surveillance testing looks like. In District 200, if this was an option that we were to implement, we would make it an available option for all in-person learners, grade 6 through 12, and in, and also at our transition space. Different than elementary, our elementary level has static student groups. We don't have lunch during the day, we have much less limited mixing of students, unless cohorts, as opposed to our secondary level. So this testing would also be available for all staff if they wanted to take advantage of that option as well, and it would be weekly. if they wanted to take advantage of that option as well, and it would be weekly surveillance testing. But this, while the testing would be optional, it does require parent consent. Data and student information is protected in the sense, so Safeguard Surveillance would only receive a vial with a barcoded seven-digit ID number, not related to the students or any of those other pieces. We end up on the backend when we get results back, they're merged with student data and handled in compliance with all privacy laws. So, we have the student information that ties back to a student identifier, but Safeguard Surveillance is only getting a barcoded piece that does not uniquely identify the student. Cost and funding source, for every test that is processed, it is $11 per test. Right now, we estimate approximately 2,800 to 3,400 tests per week. Obviously, this will be dependent on who decides to opt in during our different consent periods that we'll impose here over the next few slides. If you remember back earlier in the year, for the FY '21 budget, there was an allocated $1.6 million in contingency funds for unexpected expenditures during the school year. So, this would not create a budget impact for the FY 2020, '22 school year. Safeguard Surveillance is currently working with multiple school districts and schools, as you can see the list there. Mutryer High School, Glen Allen District 41, Greenshaw District 1 and 2, Glanbrook is a high school district, 225, Stevenson as well as a high school district, then you can see some other school districts. And I actually believe even recently, they've added a few other partners to this. So, they are working with current school districts. This is just an outline right now of some of the communication plans that this is working on, day after day, and as we roll out, if, if this process, as we go, as we talk about it tonight, it was to move forward, certainly, we'd be providing a community update tomorrow, hosting a community Zoom on Q and A, and then getting out our links around consent to testing as soon as possible, because those that opt into the program, we do need to get that consent back, because ultimately, then, that is how we determine who's in, and we have to process on the backend, data merges in different pieces so that we can get those unique barcode labels instead of our logistics process on the backend. We'll also collaborate with our Yale department and other community partners to assist in communication efforts. And then, obviously, operationally, depending on return to in-person date and how, if testing is approved and all those different pieces, operationally, individual buildings will have communication plans depending upon their specific school-based physical logistical plans. As far as giving consent, we're really looking at testing in three-week chunks. So, if a parent gives consent by December 21st, which will be the deadline for the first round, they'll first be included. This was, this would be if there was a, the first round of testing, if it was to start in the first week of January, they would be included in that first week, and would be included for three weeks, with the next opportunity to consent in on January 11th, which would include June around three weeks later, January 25th. And then, you can see, even extending it out further, you could consent in on January 25th. So, operationally, you can see, we lay this out, we do it in three-week chunks, giving people an opportunity to consent or opt in at multiple layers. At this point, I've laid out some operational pieces. I know Dr. Schuler laid out the purpose. I'm going to turn it back over again, but we'll stay in for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Salagi. And as Dr. Salagi mentioned, I do just want to share with the board that a couple of other local districts that actually did make a decision to implement Safeguard Surveillance as a surveillance testing option, I think, as recent as last night, two of the other Glen Allen districts did sign on, both District 89 and then Glenbard High School have made a decision to include that again as part of their mitigation efforts that supported. So, a couple of other just words of note, when you saw the consent and the timeline. So, a couple of things within the way that the agreement works with Safeguard Surveillance. We pay only for tests that are run. So, we do have to provide for them an estimate of the number of tests that we are going to run. There are some provisions on both sides of the range that we give them. And just a couple of notes on why that's the case. While the hard supplies that are utilized as a part of the testing process on hand, and they have them, for the lab to actually run the test, there are some supplies needed within the lab, and the lab orders those supplies based on the projected number of tests. So, any of the school districts or systems that are sending specimens to be tested, obviously, the lab wants to ensure that it has adequate supply on hand to be able to run those tests within the prescribed timeline that they've provided. And so, that's why we provide for them a range. The protections on both sides, if we are wrong on the lower side, so if the range that we project, if we are off by more than 20%, there is a premium that you would pay for a test, for tests when you go beyond about 20%. On the flip side, if we do not utilize as many tests as we've projected for them, in the following billing cycle, in the following month, we would get a credit for any test that was not run, up to 50% of that number. So, if we told them we anticipated running 100 tests, and we ran 50, we would get a credit for the other 50 tests on the, on the following billing cycle. We tell them we're going to run 100, and we run 49, we're still going to pay for 50, right? So, the maximum amount of credit is up to 50% of that. But again, there are enough school districts that are utilizing Safeguard that I think we have a pretty good sense of what participation would be in it, so that I think we can give them a range that we believe, if the board moves forward with this, would be pretty tight in the surveillance piece. There's some language in the contract that is designed to ensure that the lab can turn samples around. One of those in particular is that there's a guarantee that results will be back within 24 hours if they're running up to 1,000 samples. If they're running over 1,000 samples, that guaranteed turnaround time is actually 48 hours, that it would come back. And again, that's just a function of the lab making sure that it can, in fact, turn around results. But what I want to share is, we're thinking about timeline and implementation. When we get into a regular cycle, if the board does, in fact, choose to do this, I think we can structure that weekly sample gathering cycle to ensure that we have adequate time to get the results back so that they're useful before that particular hybrid model would return. Again, in the way that we've proposed it, we have both a hybrid A and a hybrid B group at both the middle and the high school, and so they don't all have to return samples on the same day. If you think about it, we do have four days in the week that we could consider to structure when we collect and then run those samples. And if, in fact, that's the case, that number that we would be running would fall within that, that 1,000 cap. But again, the agreement itself, I think you see in the recommendation to the board, we've recommended that agreement be approved, understanding that we'll go through a final process of attorney and superintendent review, but largely, the material matters in that are laid out. So, again, I think Dr. Campbell closed his presentation to the board last week by using the visual of kind of a big block of Swiss cheese, right? And we know, we understand that we have mitigations that are in place inside of our schools. We understand that the simplicity and the structure of the model itself, so at our elementary level, when we have students that are in a well-defined cohort that doesn't move with a static teacher, but the layers of mitigation that help you to make sure that that environment, right, can combat what will be virus that comes into the building. We've seen that in terms of cases that we have, but what we've seen is that the mitigation strategies have worked. I feel confident in our mitigation strategies at the 612 level, but I recognize that the model itself does have complexities that the elementary model does not have. And so, again, as we look a little bit later in the, in the presentation, at where do we sit in terms of the community metrics, I think the positive is that we haven't seen the full kind of spike rebound that I think was projected post Thanksgiving, but we are still operating in a place where the virus that's around us is higher than it has been at other points. And so, I think that speaks to the, to the value in considering bringing in a mitigation strategy. So, again, I think the costs are laid out. In terms of cost per test, based on the numbers that we run, I would estimate that this will run about $150,000 a month for surveillance testing. In the agreement, we are only locked into a 60-day agreement with Safeguard Surveillance. It starts from the point that the contract is executed. So, at the point that the contract is potentially executed, we're not even going to begin testing for at least two weeks due to winter break, even though we would potentially run a pilot, and so you are not locked into this as a mitigation strategy to the end of the school year. I think we, it is a mitigation strategy that we are committed to for at least six weeks upon that return, and I think we look at the information that's available to us, what we're experiencing. And again, if we see that we're at a point where we can drop one of the mitigations, right, in Safeguard Surveillance, then I think you can do that. So, I'll answer any questions, and then I think, Mr. Paulson, it might be good to go ahead and knock out the second part of this if the board wants to. It may be useful for the board to both consider Safeguard Surveillance in the context of the proposed return date rather than parse them out separately. I'll leave that to you.
So, you're, you're suggesting go through the second part, the second action item, and then go back to this?
Yeah, I'm suggesting maybe we answer any questions. If you have specific questions about this now, well, it's, it's fresh and it's there, but in terms of any, any proposed action, I would maybe consider that in the context of the return date.
So, so let me go around the room again. I'm going to start with Chris and go around, and I want to just be cognizant of the fact that Jenna is listening on the phone, so we'll end up with some comments or questions from her, and then I have a few things that probably will be covered along the way. So, Chris?
So, I just have a couple of questions, and I know that you talked about the 1.6 million of contingency that we put aside. Is there Cares money that could be used for this as well, that's COVID, since it's a COVID-related expense?
Yeah, so, we have targeted, so, CAREs, just by way of recap, are federal dollars that flow through the state to school districts to support cost incurred as a result of the pandemic. We have targeted most of our CAREs dollars to support technology purchases within the district that we put in place for this year. We obviously made a shift to one-to-one in terms of student technology, plus we've purchased some technology to support some of the live streaming synchronous models that, that are in place. So, CAREs dollars could support this. We've utilized those CAREs dollars, so, but I would recommend that this expenditure come out of that contingency you set aside in your local budget this year to support COVID-related expenses that weren't identified at the beginning of the year.
And then, just one more question. Can this surveillance testing be used to open up more opportunities for student interactions, like co-curricular opportunities? How do you see that, if it can, how do you see that taking place?
Yeah, I think, certainly, I think it opens a path to look at continued opportunities if you have, so, you know, again, we've talked about data sets and information that's available to us, and I think you've heard a lot of feedback, you know, certainly on all sides, but we've talked from a state to a county to a localized zip code level, but I think it's even been identified and recognized for the board, that even in that zip code data, you have numbers that are not necessarily attributable just directly to those that are coming into our school buildings, so, school-age students, staff right there in our buildings. Surveillance testing gives you, I think, the most localized data set that you can possibly have, which, again, I think gives you confidence, gives us confidence, in our ability to make sure we can continue. Hybrid models, I think you heard a lot in public comment, I heard a lot in public comment and the messages that have come to the, to the board, that as we get kids back in, we just want to keep them there, right? We do not want to be in a situation of yo-yoing back and forth. We recognize the challenge that creates for our staff, right, that are adjusting to models and constantly shifting. We recognize for our families, right, that are, that are doing that. So, I think it gives us stability, and I think it opens up opportunities, like you're talking about, for confidence in some of the extracurricular programs.
And one more, one more question. As we, you know, as we look at this, one of the things that I know I think about when we closed in November is, will this give us an opportunity to maybe, if we need to take an adaptive pause, it can be done maybe at a grade level within a school versus shutting down an entire system like we did? Will this, will this help in that way?
Yeah, again, it will certainly give you a more localized data set. As you think about that in the context of secondary, that's not going to be quite as targeted as perhaps like at an elementary level when you're looking at a classroom, but I do think it can give you opportunities to target a pause, especially perhaps out of buildings. So, if we see outbreak activity just within a particular building, that we need not, we wouldn't be in a situation necessarily to pause all of our middle schools if we see a very localized concern that we want to isolate and address.
Thank you.
Chris?
Uh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no. Thank you. You actually answered most of my questions in your presentation, so thank you for that. The only main question I have is, do you know, once the samples are at the lab, what the disposal process is of the tubes after they're tested?
Yes, I do. I actually talked with a company today about that, so I'm going to lose the name of the, the company that they partner with, but it is the same organization that Lowell Medical Center, as well as a number of medical laboratories in the state use to properly dispose of any testing material. So, it does not stay there, it does not get sold anywhere. They dispose of it, right, in the, in the way that Lowell Medical Center does any of its specimens that go to testing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a few questions. With, with the number of new districts that they've taken on, are there any scale-up concerns?
Yeah, no, I think the company's been very cognizant of who they're potentially bringing on in partnership, and I think cognizant of the fact that they have both the supplies and obviously the lab capacity to, to process them. So, I have not, you know, again, in checking with and talking with a number of their, their current partners, I think the board got some communication from, from a couple of community members that suggested there were concerns with, with turnaround. There have been some anomalies in other districts where there was an issue at the district level in terms of a test coming back in the wrong barcoded vials, and as a result, it delayed a specific and individual test result. But they have all indicated that the lab has been timely, and they have adhered to that promised guideline of return.
Okay. And then, this consent process, so that deadline is next Monday for the first round?
That's what we've laid out as a tender. Again, I want to be really, really clear. We brought that to you to, to help the board see what a timeline could look like. So, we, Dr. Salagi has certainly thought through a lot of those logistics. That's, that's where we've mapped out and, and we would propose if you do, do this.
How does that process work?
Yeah.
The consent. So, the consent is really opt-in? The consent, so the consent is really opt-in?
Yes, yeah. So when we've done opt-in for things, we've two ways that we've typically done that within the district. One is either through a specific Google form that we've developed that families provide that consent in, or two is through having a tag inside of our student information system, right, that a parent will access through their like PANDU account to do that. So we're looking at the two options just to see what would make the most sense in terms of us being able to meet that turnaround time in terms of consent. So we're looking at a couple of options on how we do that, but that's typically the way we've done it. That's the way we've done when parents have responded to like a shift in the hybrid. So we asked elementary families to re-consent to their choice for second trimester, as we're asking middle and high school to do the same. We use one of those two methods.
So it's going to be 100% electronic? And then it's either you opt in or you're not in and you get your next chance at whatever that date is. Can you just describe a little bit what the testing process is going to be, how we're going to, how the samples are going to be collected? And, you know, I know there's been a lot of conversations and concern about HIPAA and the separation. So obviously, you know, I have vial one and so it's day vial one, just could you just give an overview of that process?
Yeah, so I just want to be really clear. Are you asking about the whole kind of like labeling process on how that works or the actual process of collecting the sample?
Both.
Yeah. So in terms of collecting the sample, there are two options that school districts can consider utilize. One is where the testing kit goes to family and the student provides the sample at home, brings it back into the school building. A second option would be where they would provide that sample if they've given consent on site, right, in some way. I will tell you, at least in the thoughts around the first sample, is that we will need to collect that very likely before students are actually attending a day of in-person instruction. So we have thought about a process that would allow us to bring families to school in like kind of a drive-through format as we've used for a lot of pickup-drop-off types of materials where they can get the kit, deliver the sample like in the car, where if, you know, mom or dad or we're just a student and then immediately return it without it having to leave. But then moving forward in weeks two, three, and four, we're still going to weighing out what would be the most effective process to get those samples back, whether we do some of that onsite or do it at home and bring it back. In terms of, again, process itself, so every little vial has barcode, right? Only our data team, our data department knows what barcode corresponds with individual student. That information never leaves and goes to the lab. So we would label test tube with barcode. That testing kit goes to individual family. What they return back is just the test sample itself with the barcode and another little baggie that gets dropped off, gets transferred by likely some component of our health services staff that actually takes the vial, puts it into little testing trays. We have a courier that day that drives them to the lab and then the results come back within 24 hours. And again, all that's communicated back to us initially are, these are the samples, the barcodes that came up with a clinically significant finding. Our data staff then identify who the individuals are from that barcode. Our health staff then would contact families as we do now. So if we are notified by the health department of a presumed positive or a positive case, it's our health department that's doing the notification and the contact tracing.
Okay. Okay, I might come back with some other questions, but I'll stop there for now. So thank you. Jim?
I've got a few. The, just real quickly, the other night we talked about whether we would have students in classroom if they are tested or not tested. And maybe the second part of the presentation will address that, or is it definite they won't be or will be?
So participation in this would be voluntary, so that we will not have 100% of our students that have been tested.
Okay, but if I partake in it, okay, so we would open school irregardless of testing? Assuming we decide to open schools? Okay.
Let me just make sure I clarify. So we will not have 100% participation in the program. I think as we talk about timeline, my recommendation to you is still going to be that you do the first round of surveillance before we start the first day of the hybrid program, but again, not 100% of the students and their staff that are in person will have tested. I guess the one other nuance that I didn't mention and should have mentioned to this is that if a student or staff member has already been COVID-positive in the last 90 days, there really is no reason for them to participate in the surveillance program, right? For at least 90 days from their positive test result, they would not need to consent to the surveillance program. It would not be a good use of that $11 test kit. We have, I think, a lot of the students that we are aware of who are COVID-positive, that's been communicated, but that would be another effort to make sure that we do have identification of other students that may have been COVID-positive and then are not participating.
Do we have any feel for that percentage, out of curiosity? Those that are COVID-positive?
Yeah, we do from the dashboard. So actually, if you look up on our dashboard, every number that we have identified in terms of student positive is on our dashboard, when students have been in person, when students are not in person. We are not always notified of that, so I don't have a strong of a feel for it since we've been on the adaptive pause at the secondary level. But I do from the elementary level and in fact--
That's pretty low numbers. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, just then a follow-up. The, you know, the reference to the diagnostic test is the most expensive and the surveillance is the least. We pay for the surveillance. If there's a diagnostic test, who pays for that?
A family member would refer the family member to testing. So as we do now, if a student is symptomatic, if they report to school that their child is symptomatic, they pursue that testing.
Because I think I read something, some people are concerned about the cost of that. So, you know, just to be clear.
But I do want to say this, this is the last piece that I'll say. So if you look at, go back to our, the exclusion tree that's published by IDPH, right? So there are options for families. If there is a student or staff member who is symptomatic, right, obviously there's an exclusion period. So like this, if a family were to get a clinically significant finding, they'll have to go for follow-up testing, right? The student can choose to isolate for the required 10-day isolation period and then assuming they never develop symptoms, they could come back at the end of the 10-day isolation without having gone for confirmative testing.
So there would be a situation where they wouldn't have to take the test?
Yeah, it could be as long as they adhere then to the 10-day isolation.
Okay. It seems like, you know, I think Dave was alluding this to, the staff time on this has got to be tremendous. I just, the collection process, I personally wouldn't want to be the guy holding the tray that all these test tubes go into. I mean, who are the staff people that are going to be doing that?
Yeah, our health office and so I want to recognize for you that we have significant PPE in place within our health service departments. So recognize that during the day and great appreciation for our nurses and our health staff, they're manning both a well room and a potential sick room, right, as students are in our buildings. So they have PPE, you know, Jim, they would not be without appropriate PPE taking the vial out. But I mean, just in terms of the logistic, it's a matter of opening an envelope, taking the vial out and placing it in a tray. So it is time. Again, it will definitely take time to do it. I've been talking to 41 in some of the districts that have already done it. We'll develop a routine in doing it.
Okay, now the teachers are not?
No.
Okay. And we talked about volunteers. Are volunteers in this process as well?
The only place that I think a volunteer would come into play is probably if we choose to do this in the beginning, prepping all those kits, right? So we do have to prep all of the test kits that will have the envelopes, the little vials, there's a little piece of straw that you use to put the saliva in the kit. And so prepping those, we would potentially use some volunteer help and we've talked to some groups about potentially supporting that.
Again, teachers would not be involved. Okay. Okay, now the other thing, we talked about the, you know, the other night we were talking about a 70%, you know, 5,000 students or whatever, 5,000 people would be tested. It appears that that's going to be, you know, what's the number here? 28, let's call it 3,000 roughly. You know, we have about 7,000 students in that, in that grade groups, those grade groups plus teachers, and then some of them are going to be excluded because they've previously tested and so on. I mean, it's getting to me like we're, sounding to me like we're looking at a 50% participation.
So recognize you have 30% that are not attending in person either, right? So they are fully remote, would be not in that percentage that are not testing because they've already been COVID-positive and then I think a percentage that just would choose not to participate.
So if we, again, so we have maybe 5,000 students that are in class or potentially in class. And so we're talking about testing three, so 60% is the way I read that.
Yeah, I don't think our number's quite as high as five, Jim, in terms of our numbers that are signed up. But yeah, my assumption in terms of the participation rate at onset is probably in the 60 to 70% participation rate in the first round. That's been pretty typical in terms of participation. It gives you good data from a surveillance perspective. Obviously, it leaves, does leave a gap of potentially some other asymptomatic folks that have not consented to the test, but again, that's we have other mitigation strategies for. So if you get that participation level, it is serving a valuable purpose as a mitigation strategy.
When the county does testing and we see results, I mean, that's based on, again, people being tested and we see a percentage of, whatever the right term is. Okay, so those are, you know, only those that are concerned about it, probability testing, whatever. I guess, and mainly concerned here is we're spending 30-plus thousand, you know, 150,000 a month, I think was your estimate, that we're going to only have, you know, relatively, you know, we're talking about 3,000 students that we're testing, you know, and that, boy, that's, I'm giving a little trouble with that. Because again, if we start interpolating results off of the ones that are testing, I'm afraid some of the people that aren't testing are going to be ones that may have the exposure, you know, just my own personal opinion. So that bothers me a bit. So again, locally, there's, again, I'd be curious, and the ones that have been partaking in this process previously at other schools, are they varying a lot from the community data that's available by zip code? Do you have any feel for that?
Yes, so again, because I think you're talking about two different metrics, right? Like the zip code-specific data you're referencing that we'll look at graphing in a little bit is test positivity, right? So of anybody that went for COVID testing, right, within that zip code, what's the percent that came back positive? But again, regular testing, you are largely testing symptomatic individuals or individuals who were known exposure, right, and have gone for testing. So different from surveillance testing where you're taking a broad swath. Well, I would absolutely expect that our incident rate, if we do surveillance testing, would be less than 1%, right? I would absolutely expect it to be less than 1%. And that would be markedly different than the test positivity rates you see reflected in the data reported both statewide, countywide, and in the zip code piece.
So the expectation is that 1% of the people we test will be?
I'm not telling you that it's 1%. My expectation is that it will likely be less than 1% just based on what I am seeing in other places that have put in place the testing.
For this testing? Wow, that seems, okay. I mean, are we gaining enough information, I guess? You know, again, I, what, I guess if it's only 1%, I mean, that's kind of what we're gathering from our table we're doing now. Now there's been, and I thought it was eight weeks, not six weeks. Isn't there a commitment for eight weeks in that contract?
There's a 60-day commitment, but again, that's from the point of signing the contract and we're not going to be testing in the first two weeks.
Okay, so we're up six testing periods. So we're talking about, again, 3,000, whatever, 3,000 tests or give or take, and that's where we're coming up with 150 a month. So we'd be in the 200-plus range to find out that we're 1% probability rate. I guess the question then becomes if, what point does, if it goes over 1%, what do we What is that guideline? What is it? What result is going to tell us something that we're going to change something?
Yeah, so one, not a firm set guideline, what I will tell you is that there is an infectious disease doctor that has partnered with two of the Glen Allen districts and looking at kind of guidance around this. District 41 has actually set a 3% threshold. So if it's under 3%, they are comfortable with continuing the in-person experience. So that's what they set as kind of that surveillance threshold to continue to be confident. So what does that give you? Then that gives you, again, a very localized data source, right, that helps you to continue to feel confident in your in-person experiences, even if you're seeing fluctuation in that community-wide data, even if you're seeing some fluctuation in the zip code-specific data that, you know, may be up over 8%, might be 9%, maybe 10%, but if you are with confidence seeing the results within your localized community, you're not shutting down, right? So to me, it is a support that allows you to with confidence stay open, right? I think that is the better. Now, what is that cost worth? Right, obviously, as a board member that's going to vote on this, you have to make that individual determination if you believe that the cost benefit is there, but it is a mitigation that allows you to get us back to reopening and I think stay open. And to me, there's significant value in that.
And again, the elementary kids, we're not even testing. And again, I guess, I'm just going to throw this off a thought, extra dollars that we're going to consume here. Could we buy more aides or teachers or substitutes or guest teachers, whatever, whatever the proper term is, with 150 or 300, you know, 200 or 300,000? Could we find them and spend them by increasing our costs or something?
Could, so again, could you, there are other things that you could spend that money on, sure, right? A dollar that's not spent on testing is available to potentially be spent for another resource that's there. You know, again, I think, I guess I would say just keep in mind, as you do with your budget, right, there are costs you incur in your budget that likely will carry forward beyond the current year unless you obviously reduce that expense in the out year. You know, money spent on testing is a one-time expense, right? At the point in which the testing program is no longer needed, and I guess I would say to you, I think that's a positive experience, right? If we get to a point where this is not needed, my assumption is that that's because we've seen that community data-- seen that community data come down to a comfortable range where we're not concerned with the same things we've been concerned with...
Yep.
...over the last couple of months. So I would love to see us at the point, six weeks from now, where this is not needed and that, and/or we're talking about utilizing this information to expand opportunities for students inside of our buildings.
Last item is the data table we have, shows again, a low result, and that's from one of the creepiest things I can see. Some of that, again, is the elementary, we have the ability to separate. None of these will lead to full in-person in the near term, learning at middle school and high school, full-time, not hybrid. I mean, not at this point until we, I mean, will this assist in that process, or is there going to be other data, the community data that will drive it?
Yeah, I think two elements to that. So right now, there is a firm piece of guidance around the importance of physical distancing and the definition of physical distancing. That has not been relaxed. So if that's relaxed, you know, if guidance is updated from IDPH, our local health department that relaxes physical distancing from six to three feet, that will open up avenues to bring additional students in. The other thing, though, that I would say, Jim, as we evaluate, is that right now, as we've moved kids into hybrid programs, we did see a trend toward the end of our last hybrid experience where we had some students that elected to stay remote. If that happens and we continue to see that happen, it may open up a path for some hybrid students to actually come in, potentially a little bit more, right? Because it's all about physical space that determines how many students are going to be inside of a classroom. So I think if either the six-foot distancing guideline is relaxed, that opens up a path and/or we see our participation level shift, and that opens up a path to offer the in-person a little more often for some students, I think those could be the two paths.
And the teachers' union is not, do they have a strong opinion on this? I didn't get, when I spoke before, I didn't hear that that was a, I mean, I heard a cost offset and so on, but forgetting, regardless of cost, I mean, are they demanding, in your opinion, are we getting that kind of feedback that this is a very highly important item to them?
No, I mean, I think that you've definitely heard some feedback and some concern around the cost, right? I think, you know, cost being primary concern, and I think the same questions that you're wrestling with, and that we know and we recognize that dollars are valuable, right? Resources are valuable. You've always, as a board, taken a very thoughtful approach to how do you allocate your dollars to best support, right, our students and their instruction. So I think they register appropriate concerns in just saying you want to make sure that a dollar spent is spent in the right place when there are going to be other competing interests at some point in the future as we look at how we continue to support the students during the pandemic. So I think that's primarily been the concern, and then obviously some concern around just teacher participation and what are the conditions under which they choose to participate in the program. Those are conversations we would need to have with our associations anyway.
And we look forward to those conversations and more adaptive is necessary, great. Okay, those are my questions.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we'll go to Rob, and then Jenna heads up here after Rob.
Thanks, Brett. I want to try to address some of the themes we've seen in email feedback that have been responded to an email, but I want to talk about them broader in a public setting so everyone here gets the benefit of the value of the answer. We heard via email and through the survey data that some of our students who have a high support need, whether it's EC transition or others, have a little bit more difficulty distancing or just need a lot more support in maintaining the protocols. Is that group, whatever that means, available to opt into this program with parental consent?
Yeah, we could certainly have that conversation and make that available. It would be at the secondary level anyway, so the opportunity would be there already at your middle and high school, so I think you're talking specific to early childhood or perhaps some of the programs at the elementary level, and we could have that conversation.
That'd be great. And then I did get a piece of, or a question on, are there any issues with us offering that program to some groups but not all groups?
In terms of like the elementary level?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think, again, it, well, it would be voluntary. I think as long as you have legitimate cause or reason to determine the need to extend that opportunity, then you could. And again, I guess I just will mention to the board, and if that's a consideration we want to explore down the road, I think you want to look very carefully at the data from those programs, because they have been in-person. So you would have the ability to look at some comparative data to see if, in fact, even though there is a reality of, you know, there may be more close, there is more close contact, right, inside of some of our student programs, you have the ability to really study if, in fact, there's been a higher incident or infection rate.
Thank you. We did talk about the disposal process, there were some questions about disposal and what was going to happen there. I just wanted to make the point that, and it was in email as well, that we handle personally identifiable information all the time amongst our student body, our students, and our staff for that matter. So this is not a new phenomenon for us. Any comment on that or expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, no, I think you're spot on, and I guess what I would say, Rob, especially in the technology-driven world that we're in, more and more, right, we are very cognizant of data security, we have to be. I think the board has heard Mr. Mack and Mr. Mack's team come and share with you the layers of mitigation that we have around our data systems, and so it's a concern, it's a valid concern, but it's not one that we're not familiar with because we have to be very mindful of data privacy.
There was a very, a few very specific questions from the public on, is anyone personally benefiting from the contract? And I know we responded to an email, but can you just publicly talk about that?
Yeah, there's no relationship that, obviously, I'm aware of anybody on this board to this company or to me. Again, I mentioned, I became aware of Safeguard Surveillance and what this opportunity was when I attended the Glen Allen 41 School Board meeting to learn about it and hear the presentation. There are some other players in the testing market, again, the University of Illinois System Shield is looking to go through a process that would make that surveillance system available to K-12 schools. In fact, there are some school districts in DuPage that have looked at Shield as well as some other antigen, you know, antigen tests that are out there and in the market. So there are other players that, you know, again, as a part of kind of vetting and getting to this solution, we made the decision that this solution for testing was the best solution for us. We didn't pick Safeguard and then say that's the test we want to go with, we chose this solution Safeguard is offering it.
And we've also examined pricing in the marketplace as well. I guess lastly, the question is, and it comes from, we've seen many emails, and Jim hit on it as well, is I have a dollar to spend on something in our budget, where do I spend it? Do I spend it on technology? Do I spend it on substitute teachers, other supports? I personally believe a dollar spent to support staying open and keeping kids in schools is the most important dollar we can spend. That's my personal opinion, and my vote will reflect that. Thanks.
Jenna?
Jenna, you want to go ahead and ask some questions? Jenna, are you there? I heard a noise.
You guys are very spotty in and out, so I'm having trouble, I can hear Jeff, but I can't really hear the rest of you very well.
Okay, go ahead and ask your questions or comments.
Mike, I don't have a question, can I?
Okay, no questions. So just a few comments for me. Most of the questions and thoughts that I had have already been addressed, so real quickly, just to go back to the funding again, we allocated contingency in our budget this year to cover a variety of COVID-related costs. If we exceed that contingency, we have the ability to go into our fund balance, which has been built up over 10 years of good financial management. There'd be no long-term ramifications or even next-year ramifications on our budget for this one-time cost, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I might disagree with that, but go ahead. Just...
That didn't register with me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we, I don't remember what the dollar amount or the percentage of our fund balance is, so if we're looking at $150,000 a month, and let's just say for our numbers, we do it for three months, I don't think we would do it that long, but that's $450,000. If we exceed our contingency in our budget and have to go into our fund balance, just to use a number, I'm going to guess it's maybe in the $100,000 range, I'm just using numbers for the sake of conversation, that is not going to have a long-term structural impact on our budget that's going to have restrict our ability to do facility improvements, restrict our ability to potentially make other decisions, restrict our financial ratings from the state. Are those observations correct?
Yeah, I mean, any dollar you spend out of fund balance is a dollar that's not available, right, in the future, I guess, but I think part of what you're asking is, is the assumption that that dollar spent is going to impact the structural ability to balance a budget next year and fiscal '22? I would say no, based on the fact that it's not an expense that's going to carry forward into that, but obviously, any dollar you spend, if you deficit spend this year, that does impact, right, what happens in the out years.
But it wouldn't, there was an early email message we received suggesting that we were going to go into debt to be able to support this program. We're not talking at all about going into debt, issuing bonds or debt to pay for this. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And the other question I had was really, one of the things we talked about when we went back to remote was the challenge of contact tracing at our middle school and high school levels. As the number of cases in our schools increased, and then you had to replicate that contact tracing across eight periods in eight classrooms, that become incredibly difficult. So can you talk a little bit about the potential benefit of this screening system and how that might improve or maybe dampen a little bit the challenges of contact tracing?
Yeah, so I guess immediately, part of the response would be that it probably brings more cases where you contact tracing, so now we are doing some contact tracing on asymptomatic, right, individuals that have been identified, but in the end, like the overall goal was to bring levels down, right, to bring cases down both inside and outside of our schools, and as that happens, that lessens the burden of contact tracing, right? The more cases you have, the more difficult that challenge is. So I, you know, I think the goal would be that it may increase the burden immediately as you're doing contact tracing on asymptomatic as well as the known symptomatic cases, but if it's effective in bringing overall community transmission down, then I think we will see a cost benefit as that happens and we see additional freedoms from the virus.
Right, right. And then finally, just to share with the board, I had a conversation today with the superintendent of schools at Nutria High School, who's a client of mine, I just wanted to see how this was going. Just some anecdotal data for Nutria, they're experiencing about a 0.3 to 0.4% positivity rate in their testing program. They're a very large, large high school, probably of the percentages of students they have testing, probably more than the numbers that we projected for the, up to, I think it was 3,400 students. So they're experiencing 0.3 to 4% positivity. They just decided that on January 4th, they're going to return to in-person learning, but this test is going to be mandatory for students to be able to attend in-person, and they have had no problems with the turnaround time as they've gone through Safeguard Surveillance. So they found that the program is very successful, the embracing of it, their participation percentages have increased from the beginning. They definitely believe that there's a tangential benefit out into the community, that the more potential asymptomatic carriers they're identifying, there's a benefit into the community. So they were very, kind of a reference check, I guess, they're very supportive of the process, and I think it's a very valuable tool to assure that they continue, can continue to ramp up the percentages of students that are attending in-person. And also do believe that it's essential to sustain in-person learning through the end of the year, which I think is something that we've talked about, and I think is probably one of the most important things, is the ability to sustain in-person learning. It's not just about getting back, it's about keeping the kids there until June 10th. So that's all I had to say and comment on in terms of this proposal. Any other final comments on the testing proposal before Dr. Shulor continues with the second piece? Okay.
So we're going to go into a couple of other things then that I want to give you an update on, the board asked that we bring to tonight, an update on metrics. Again, I think the key concern at the board level was to determine if, in fact, we are seeing that spike post Thanksgiving. So this is the DuPage County Return to School Framework that I shared with you at your last meeting, so this was as of 12/7/2020. As of 12/14, we continue to be in the substantial level. Again, data that feeds this is actually about a week old when it makes it on to the Return to School Framework, so I'm going to actually take you to the localized data that, again, is a bit more recent as of the beginning of this week. Again, a couple of metrics that are tracked, weekly case rate per 100,000, and again, even from end of last week at our board meeting to where we are as of today, that continues to hold pretty steady, some minor fluctuation, actually, a little bit of dip down. It is still in that red level based on where it sits, but have not seen a specific rebound. And then positivity rate, again, has held about the same, it's held right around 10%, 11%, and it's kind of fluctuated in that range. And then same with rolling cases per day, which is related to cases per 100,000. So what I would say, just even in conversation with the health department, is that I do believe confidently we are far enough out from Thanksgiving at this point, that I think we've seen what it is that we're going to see post Thanksgiving. So I haven't seen kind of the sharp dive up that was projected, we haven't seen steady decline yet as it's come down, we've seen, you know, some minor fluctuation, but again, I think that is a good news story in terms of what we saw post Thanksgiving compared to what we had anticipated seeing. And then again, this chart just shows you those specific numbers identified on here up through 12/12. Elementary, again, just we'll update this chart for you to reflect data from last week, so there were 20 student cases at the elementary level last week, 96 students quarantined at the high point, only four staff cases and six staff quarantines. So again, a couple of good messages, I think, on this chart, that the quarantine numbers remain, again, they are up from where they were at the peak early and at the low point early in the school year, but they have maintained even in the two weeks following Thanksgiving and more in... And more important to that, the staff data has been positive. And you'll see that reflected in this next chart as well, that again, just reflects all staff absences for that week. So this is the combination of quarantine positive case and staff that have to be out with a symptom. And again, that number has come down to 47. So I feel solidly that post winter break, that we're in a good place in terms of where we'll be with staffing. Dr. Kyle mentioned the efforts that are underway to continue to address substitute needs. You heard in public comment earlier, a comment about Virtual Academy, which I was not aware of, but certainly we're looking at that to ensure that, obviously, we are absolutely reflecting the need to provide substitute coverage there when we need it. But I think better place in terms of our ability to address the staffing piece. And so our recommendation, and then actually I'm going to bring Melissa Murphy up to go through a few other things in the curriculum piece, assuming that the board has interest in the Safeguard Surveillance Program, my recommendation to you tonight would be that we begin the hybrid models on January the 11th. I think the data would support that. That gives us time to implement and put in place the surveillance piece. So whether those two recommendations are different, that's going to be the recommendation you're going to see at the end of the presentation tonight. So here's Mrs. Murphy.
Before you leave, and the local data and that, when was the date we decided to stop hybrid learning or in-person learning?
We stopped hybrid and in-person learning, I want to say around the 12th, I believe.
So is the October 14th start date, more or less, on this chart?
Did we start it hybrid or stopped it?
Stopped it, I'm sorry.
Stopped it in November. You started it actually back in October. So at the point that you originally started the hybrid plan, you were just after October the 14th, I believe it was, right around Columbus Day.
Okay.
Stopped it a little over a month later.
So around 11/13?
It was November 16th was the first day.
So I did hear the decision at the November 11th board meeting and then went into play on the 16th.
So it peaked out around that time, yes? Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide additional updates on what our teachers have been, teams have been working on with regards to teaching and learning. Last week, this was the slide that I showed to the board, and this highlights the priorities for a hybrid model. So just capturing those again for everyone. First and foremost, provide a high-quality in-person learning experience. Two, continue to move the curriculum forward, both synchronously and asynchronously. Three, provide live instructional supports for students daily. And four, provide a live connection for students and peers daily. And we discussed last week how points three and four were the ones that we did want to improve upon moving forward with our middle school hybrid program. Here you're going to see an example of a lesson that utilizes live streaming as an enhancement to our current model. And so the lesson starts with a connect and launch. And our periods, excuse me, at our middle school are 42 minutes in length. And so it starts with a connect and launch. And in this, it could be a whole class meet where the teacher is reviewing the lesson tasks and the learning targets. And then at 8:10, the students could be moving into student-centered activities and instructional supports. And with that, students could be watching a screencast that would be an EdPuzzle and utilizing formative assessment questions. And then students could be, after that, working collaboratively in pairs. And then the teacher could be providing supports to both in-person students and at-home students during that time period. And then the lesson could wrap up around 8:35 with some closure. And the teacher could be summarizing some important points to both groups of students. And students could be completing an exit ticket with a Google Form. I do want to emphasize, again, this is an example. And daily lesson designs could vary depending on the content and the lesson objectives. Here you're going to see another example. And actually, this sample utilizes a blended learning strategy that we have been working on, and that's called the station-rotation model, which works well in our hybrid learning environment. And so again, connect and launch at 8 o'clock. And in this case, students could be reviewing an outline of the day's agenda, station tasks and learning objectives. After they've done that quickly, it could move into various stations where the first station, a teacher would be working with students in person and also students on a meet where they're providing a mini lesson on the day's target. And then a second station would be, students could be working on an assignment collaboratively with key concepts. That could be with cohort partners, either the students that they're with in class or potentially students who are at home as well. And then the third station could be independent skill practice. Lesson can close with key reflections and learning points with students either in a meet or the students in person, both, and also with an exit slip with a Google Jam board. So here you can see this example actually showcases less screen time as well. So there's lots of different ways that this can look. But I do want to emphasize that integrating live streaming as another model or another enhancement to our model certainly requires some shifts in instructional design and delivery.
It's middle school? Okay, we're doing this at high school?
Correct, correct. We are utilizing live streaming at high school. So when we thought about our priorities with our hybrid model, the two that we spoke about that we do want to maintain are providing that high-quality in-person learning experience, but also moving the curriculum forward. So what does this look like by adding our live streaming element? Well, first and foremost, our learning needs to be designed so it promotes active learning and it avoids passive watching of a lesson on a live video call. That's very important to our team. Second, prioritize our video calls for supports, collaborations, and connections. And also, we want to continue to utilize digital tools that deliver content, collaborate, assess, and provide feedback. Now, the two priority areas that we know we want to increase are providing those live instructional supports, but also the live connections daily. And so what does this look like with live streaming? Well, first and foremost, this gives us some new opportunities. This gives us that opportunity to provide more structure and organization for our students. We know that that's feedback that we have heard, that on those asynchronous days, our middle school students needed those supports. So the live streaming with the daily connections with our teachers provides additional opportunities to provide those supports. Additionally, it allows our teachers to support student learning each day. And it gives us that opportunity to continue to strengthen the classroom and school community with real-time activities and collaboration between our students. So here we've laid out our implementation plan. So currently, we are working to set up the equipment in all of the classrooms. And we'll continue to work on that through the month of December. And then the month of January consists of multiple things. It's technical training for our staff on how to use the equipment. It's professional learning on how to enhance instruction with live streaming. It's practicing using that technology with students that are in the classroom and at home. It's preparing our students for new instructional model. Therefore, we're recommending a phase-in with full implementation on February 1st, which actually is the first day of the second semester. So before we move on to the very end, I can take any questions that the board may have.
Do we have all the equipment?
Yes.
Currently have students in the Virtual Academy Middle School. Yeah, Virtual Academy, right? Yeah, that's right down. And how does that, how will this affect those students?
Those students in the Virtual Academy at the middle school level are taught by a separate group of teachers.
And will continue to be done. And when is their next election date of being in person or not?
For second semester.
So February 1st as well?
Correct. So we recently sent out communication to all secondary families, giving them the opportunity to request a change to their placement. And that would take effect second semester.
Okay. And that, so again, they would not, their delivery of their education wouldn't change if they stay in Virtual Academy?
That's correct.
What if they come back? What if there's a day that we turn into full in-person? You know, not hybrid, full in-person. How did, would that hybrid, I mean, the Virtual Academy program, it could be on different wave lengths, I would think. Are they consistent enough?
Well, I think the biggest piece that you need to think about there is we are combining students from multiple schools with teachers from multiple schools. So that would have, certainly have an impact on students and teachers and their learning experience in that regard and the relationships that they have developed as student-teacher relationships.
And my, as I'm thinking about that, would the Virtual Academy students be available to be tested? Is that part of our testing group? Dr. Schuler? Would the Virtual Academy students have the opportunity to opt into the saliva surveillance testing?
I don't know that there would be a reason for you to do that surveillance testing. I suppose the board could make that decision, but that just expands your numbers for testing.
I'm just thinking that if February 1st is going to be the date, I mean, that's pretty close to when we start getting results on these things.
So I want to be, I'm sorry, I want to sound like a date in terms of...
Electing back in?
Yeah, if they elect back in, then yes, without a doubt. If we are still doing surveillance testing at that point and they start attending in person, then yes, that opportunity.
That wouldn't happen until February 1st if they, they couldn't test prior to electing back?
We would likely, if we knew they were transitioning back, we would likely do the same thing that I'm recommending you do right after winter break. And that's to run the first surveillance before the first day of in-person.
Okay.
But that would fit into a cycle that's already there. I just want to portray a pen, I think, on one part gem of your questions. So I think the board has received feedback several times from Virtual Academy families concerned that when the hybrid model resumes, previously it did impact the synchronous schedule of instruction within the Virtual Academy. And that's something that we're working on. Kind of the data point around that is about 27% of our Virtual Academy middle school students are in band and orchestra. And we've allowed them to continue to access the band and orchestra classes at their school, right, instead of that running as its own program. And so that actually is the one place where we got, we're tied a little bit to the bell schedule within the building. But that's something that Mr. Smith and Mrs. Murphy are working on. I think we've received considerable feedback, but the current remote schedule works well for those that will continue in the remote environment. And so we'd like to find an opportunity to do that. But I wouldn't want it to come at the cost of telling 27% of our families that they can't access a music program that they've currently been accessing. So we're working on a solution to that, I think we can find. And it's just, obviously, we're looking to be creative in how that could happen. And work with our teachers to help us figure that piece out.
So are the questions right now, you want to be about live streaming at middle school? Or do you want it to be anything we want to say about here?
Anything you want. So let me just recap our recommendation for complete clarity, and then you can ask any questions that you have and discuss that. So our recommendation is that we move forward with safeguard surveillance and implement surveillance testing. We recommend that we start that surveillance testing the week of January 4th would be our major implementation timeline. We would recommend then returning to the hybrid model at the middle and high schools on January the 11th. The live streaming element at the middle school, we would recommend or ask that you give us some phase-in time to that so that the go-live of the live streaming element would take place on February the 1st. But teachers would have that equipment and would give us opportunity to provide support and time and training. I think as we were out at one of the high schools today, I think the Teaching and Learning Committee had an opportunity to actually talk with some teachers and see the, kind of, the variety of setups within both the remote and the live streaming piece. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. That is obviously a place where we have to recognize the time, town treasure of teachers and figuring out the piece that works well. And so we would recommend that the phase-in on live streaming go to February 1st. So again, just to recap, safeguard surveillance, return to hybrid on February the 11th, live streaming starting on, I'm sorry, January the 11th. Live streaming starting February 1st.
All right, I just want to start off by talking about Rob and I are on the Teaching and Learning Committee, and we did have the opportunity, I think we spent about two hours this morning at Wheaton North, and were able to talk to quite a few teachers. The really interesting thing was we were able to see kind of the autonomy of the different setups within the classrooms and how they're utilizing the time. And they spent time talking to us about what it's like when it's hybrid, what it's like when students are fully, I feel like I'm getting a little bit of feedback there, when students are fully remote. We were able to kind of watch as a distance, as the different screens that they're utilizing. It's a lot to manage. It definitely is a lot to manage. The enthusiasm as they were welcoming their students first thing this morning, that was great. We listened to concerns and things that they also had. We pretty much walked the entire building. And one of the really interesting things was the ability to see, there's a room for kids that are, have been identified as struggling and what that looks like. And it's picture a round table that maybe would seat four or five students where they can sit. There's information on that table, they can scan on their phone, set up some tutoring opportunities. But that room is where lunch is also served, one of the places where lunch is also served. So everybody is facing in one direction. It's, I would say it's equally physically distanced from how we are right now as board members. So I was able to visualize. I think that was an important piece, was able to visualize what lunch would look like. I know that is a concern for our staff. Read all of the surveys. One of the things that I noted about lunch is 80% of the high school staff are identified that they are not near the lunchroom, but it is causing concern for them that lunch is there. The number for middle school, it seems like more are, close are around that area. So I was just kind of curious, is there a reason why do we have more middle school staff that is supervising lunch than high school? Because I think it said 64%, which meant 36% of them are near the lunchroom. Because I think it said 64%, which meant 36% of them are near the lunchroom. So I was trying to, I was trying to understand that a little bit. You know, I have a couple of questions, I have a, I have a couple of comments. And, you know, I, I've been in this district, tied to it in some way now for 27 years. I've never seen the divide that I feel we're having right now between parent perception of teachers and teachers kind of perception, and I'm concerned by that. And, you know, one of the themes that I feel like where they are seeing eye to eye is that we're not listening. And, you know, I, the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails that we have received and that we read, all of us read, we are listening. And sometimes I know that when we feel like we're not being heard, it's because they're not getting necessarily maybe the answer that they, that they want. And, you know, I saw, I saw an interesting comment in an, in an email today that said, "Board, you are elected to serve the entire community." And I just want to put a reminder out there, our entire community consists of 25% are parents. 75% are not parents, community members. And we have to keep that in mind, a very large portion of our staff are also community members. So we're hearing so many different perspectives. You know, I, I know without a doubt, every one of us sitting around this table, first and foremost comes the students. We want our staff and students safe. You know, I, I went back and spent some time after I moved, you know, I went back and looked at, you know, as I've read, and we've all read, a lot of staff emails in the last 48 hours. And I went back to the beginning of the school year and when we started hearing from our staff. And we heard from our staff when there was concerns of us opening back in August. We had a big push. And then we had another push when we were talking about opening hybrid. And when we closed in November, I went back and I looked at every single email. And I didn't have an email from the time of we closing, we closed 612 in November until last week. And that was a fair amount of time that we didn't hear from anybody. And I, I received two personally, a phone call from someone I highly respect that wanted to share opinions, and another person that also I highly respect that wanted to share opinions that contacted me. But we really didn't hear. And so as I read all of these staff emails, "You're not listening, you're not listening, you're not listening," really, up until the last meeting, two hours before the last meeting, we got our survey data, we really hadn't heard anything. And so I, I want to start with an idea of our staff uses a formative assessment a lot of times at the beginning of something. And maybe that's what we need, is a little touch point, a touch point every week. It's a question that goes out to our staff, or it goes out to our community, it goes out to our students, on a focused target that we want information on. And then that's a way that we can continue to hear throughout this process. Number two, I know Bryce spoke tonight, and he talked about he wants this change, this fourth change, to be our last change. And I'm going to respectfully disagree with that, because I think we continue to keep pushing forward. I, I don't feel we give up until everybody's back in school. And, and, you know, will that happen this, this semester? I sure hope it does with vaccine, or we get more people in school. If we have the opportunity to open up more spots for more in-person learning, I'd like that to happen. And I don't want us to say we're boxing ourselves into something that this is going to be the last hurrah for the rest of the year. You know, the word consistency has come up a lot. It's come up from staff, it's come up for parents. And, you know, I want us to start looking at consistency, our goal is not how many days are we in school? Or is there going to be a clean start? I think our consistency goal is our students recognize that all the important adults in their life right now are working on their behalf, and we are not trying to tear each other down, because that's what I think is happening. And I'm very concerned at the message that our students are receiving. And, and, and so, you know, it was very respectful when I walked through here tonight outside with, with both people who are looking at wanting to be in person five days a week, and, and people who are wanting to get kids back into school, but maybe aren't quite wanting it to be as aggressive as, as maybe we're going out. And, you know, so I have a couple of points that I would like us to, I'd like to ask about, one of them being this asynchronous opportunity. So when we go back at middle school, it will be fully asynchronous learning on that Wednesday. Am I correct in that? Like, it matters, high schools currently right now?
We would assume when we go live on, on...
Yes, that's what I'm saying. When we go live stream, it would go to a similar, a similar...
Very likely, yes.
So I, I guess when I looked at survey data and, and that time being valuable, you know, I, middle school teachers felt that 48% of work is valuable. And middle, and high school teachers felt that that asynchronous time, 55% felt it was valuable for students. And I, I want those numbers higher, but they did feel that it was very valuable for themselves as a staff. So I would really like us to look at how can we make asynchronous learning be more meaningful where everybody is feeling that way? Let me just look real quickly here. I think I got everything that I wanted to, everything that I wanted to say for now, at least.
So we have, I have some comments, one question I'll get to. We've received a large amount of feedback from all sides and perspectives over the past week. I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to write and express your stories and concerns. I would also like to take a minute to address our various, various parts of our community. To our administration, thank you for your tireless work over these past nine months. The plans you have presented have been thoughtful and thorough. Dr. Schuler, as both a board member and a parent, I thank you for your leadership and steadfastness, bestness through this entire experience. To our teachers and staff, I see you and I hear you. 14 of you are teaching my two kids right now. I personally see the mountains you are moving each and every day to teach content in a creative and fulfilling way. Sitting here as a board member, I would like to address a specific point. I, as a board member, care about our teachers and staff. However, I also understand my role as a board member. Working with teachers and staff is a function that is delegated to the administration, meaning the superintendent and his team. When Dr. Schuler and the senior leadership team present plans to us, I trust that they have considered and incorporated your feedback to the best of their ability. To our parents, I see you and I hear you. While the anger and frustration are clear, through the pointed words and the all-caps correspondence, I see and feel the fear and anxiety we are all experiencing. We are being faced with a time in parenting for which no book has been written, no expert can explain, and no institution can fix. We are being forced to watch our children adapt and struggle in an environment being controlled by something we cannot see. It's excruciating. To our students, you are our purpose. As we adults navigate these messy waters, please know you are always at the top of the mountain we all climb each and every day. I'm not going to sit here and give you a bunch of quotes to keep you going. I am going to acknowledge that this is hard, this is very hard. But I will say that we will get through it. I don't know exactly when or exactly how, but I do know we will get through it and it will end. Overall, none of us are going to bat a thousand with our words and actions in this moment, including myself. While the vitriol is certainly present, I do take a step back and realize we are all in the same big boat. If there was a time in our lives when the saying "It takes a village" was relevant, it's right now. We don't all have to like each other, but we do have to find the grace to carry out our respective roles and recognize the difference between helpful and hurtful. I give you my word that I will do that, and I hope all of us can take a step back and recognize the same. Now on to what we're talking about this evening. My recommendation is that I support the saliva testing for students in middle school and high school. As Rob put it, I also support it though for all staff in early childhood through 12th grade or through senior, including transition. I agree with the return on January 11th. I, I believe that we need at least one, if not two weeks of remote learning to account for the anticipated holiday travel and family gatherings by both students and staff. Two activities our national health experts tell us are the biggest contributors to COVID spread. I believe the saliva testing that occurs schools to be a safer environment for all who enter. It will allow for a more targeted quarantine enclosures if necessary, and most importantly, keep our schools open to provide consistency to our students and staff. I believe that even as community spread may rise, the saliva testing allows us a way to better manage asymptomatic transmission within our schools. While not foolproof, nor providing an environment of zero risk, I believe saliva testing should be in place before we open our schools, and the first testing should occur between students, I'm sorry, before students begin a hybrid schedule. I support whichever the administration feels that can be done, and as you've said, that's January 11th. I also want to say I fully understand the cost and how this will be funded through the contingency funds that we have already authorized, and I support the use of those funds in this way. So my one question to you with the January 11th start is that are you going to bring staff and students back on January 11th? Or are you going to, because I know like District 41, they're testing, they're, they're remote those first few days as they test before people enter the building. And so like their first day is actually midweek. And so I'm just curious what the thought process is there.
Yeah, we would, we would target that week prior, so the week of January the 4th toward the end of that week to actually execute the first round of surveillance so that we were ready to go on the 11th.
Okay, great. Thank you, and I'm sorry I read that, but I had to get it right, and so I apologize for just reading it, but thank you. That's all I have.
I'll start with the question, the pilot for the D-200 staff. First of all, for staff, it's going to be opt-in as well?
Ultimately, live streaming will be required.
Surveillance, surveillance.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry for not being clear.
Yes, yes.
So they opt in.
Yes.
How many staff do you expect to be in the pilot, roughly?
Well, so again, I'm sorry, I think we're talking two different things. The pilot is not like, like, the testing of our staff will be opt-in. The pilot is literally a small pilot group that's primarily going to be comprised of probably people at the school service center and some students we draft into the pilot, like maybe a group of 30 people.
Okay.
And it's just for the point of actually walking through the entire process to see that it all works.
Yeah, I just, I remember Dr. Campbell talking about that pilot process, I just wanted to get a feel for it.
Correct.
Thank you. I just have a, a few brief things. I'm going to start by, you know, saying thank you now. Also, the evidence of us listening, I mean, again, I appreciate the focus on middle school and some of the changes there, because that is where, you know, there's been some gaps or some needed improvements. And so I think, you know, it's evidence of us learning. Like Chris said, I mean, this issue, this whole thing is so divisive. And, you know, the, one of the gentlemen that spoke talked about the, you know, the routine and the, a receiver expecting to catch the ball, and so it's just clear. Well, you know, what's difficult here is what's routine? What's routine to me, you know, it's not just catching the ball, it's running the right route. I mean, everybody has a different perspective. And so, you know, and I appreciate everybody's input, but it, it's just, it's really difficult, because no matter what we do, it's not going, some people we're going to be completely on the opposite of, other people are going to say, oh, great, thank you. And, and that's just, that's just what it is. But, you know, this, there's just so many unknowns and so much uncertainty that it just becomes, you know, there is no routine, there is no right answer. What's clearly right to some people is clearly wrong to others, and, you know, and that comes across in emails. You know, but I do believe, I guess I can't say we listen, I listen to all of viewpoints. I read all the emails, I listen to all that, to all what everybody's saying. When it comes down to it, students first. I mean, that, that is our first obligation. I think what Susan said about teacher input and so forth is right. I mean, that's what we rely on the staff to do. A lot of perception of we are closed because we're bowing to the union, the teachers' union, and that's not the case, at least in my view. We're not closed because the teachers want us closed, we're closed because of, you know, the lack of substitutes and difficulty in contact tracing, not having enough teachers. We do care about our teachers and staff, we do listen to them. So it's, you know, to, to say that we've been ignoring them, I agree with, you know, these guys did a good job of covering a lot of these points. What were we supposed to listen to in November and early December when it was silent? You know, I saw I struggled with, with us ignoring them. Yeah, we didn't talk a lot about teachers last week, and maybe we should have, but, I mean, we, we do care about them. You know, we've been steadfast since about our desire to have kids in school. The administration has, I think every one of us sitting around the board table, we want kids in school. But we also want to offer choice to families not comfortable with in-person. And so that, you know, and that continues to be our theme and continues to be where we are here. And, you know, we just, we have such an outstanding administrative team. You know, you and your staff is so good that it makes our job very easy. You know, this is the first time that it's been a little bit uneasy, or there's a lot more viewpoints and struggles. And the strength of the team and the relationship that, that we have and the way we work together, you know, I mean, I believe we're making the best decisions and doing, you know, but I can't speak enough to how, how, you know, there, how many factors are being considered, the balance, the, the sound decision-making, the ability to, and willingness to listen to every question and have conversations, whether it's at 8:00 in the morning or 8:00 at night. You know, I just think that's, you know, I can't say enough about what a strong team that we have. And it's, it's not going to be perfect, and we're going to make mistakes. And, you know, if it's a 50/50 thing right now, we're going to not make half the people happy, no matter what we do. I've struggled a little bit with the surveillance testing, just in thinking through it. I do like, I mean, to me, that Swiss cheese illustration is, you know, it's another factor that I think does give us a comfort level. And it, and while it may not help definitively in the community, I do think just logically that it does help with that. The fact that we have allocated those funds and we have those funds available, this is not going to prevent us from hiring one teacher or 10 teachers next year. So I think it is, you know, a one-time expense that's, that's warranted and helps give us assurance that once we open, we stay open. And I think that, that should be our guiding principle. So I, I, I am in support of it, and I am in support of the timeline and the January 11th date. I know that it's, you know, an aggressive date, but I think it makes sense to, to do that. That's where I stand.
I think the fiscal conservative in me is, can't get me over the hurdle of the surveillance cost versus the 0.5 expected rate of occurrences. And I think that, you know, we have other sources that have, we get it from our own charts, we get it from the public body information and so on. And I want to make it clear that we're not going to start or stop the process of a date we start, whether we test or not, because we're not testing everyone. So I mean, we're only testing, you know, whatever, 60% of our group if everyone opts in. So I mean, again, we're not getting some definitive statement that it's, it's going to be, you know, we're going to be above a half a percent or whatever that number is. to be, you know, we're going to be above a half a percent or whatever that number is. And I think when we talk about where, when we talk about the contingency fund, we keep talking about the contingency fund, number one. Number two, I don't know what we've spent during the day on the contingency fund. I think we started out a million, I thought I heard a billion six as I now number. And I don't know what's to come. I really don't know what it is. We're adding more technology costs just to get to live streaming. So, you know, I think there's, you know, there's unknowns on the contingency. So I, you know, I'd like to have the bank available if we need it more than what I think we're going to get out of this program. So be that, okay? The, I think that, you know, on the start date, you know, I, it's outside of my expertise to say that we should start on February, you know, 2nd or January 4th or whatever, and I really rely on the staff and the senior leadership to work with the teachers and come up with a good conclusion on that. You know, I still think that, you know, we're one of the few school districts that has had a consistent elementary program going on all year. And I, you know, I, you know, we don't talk about that enough, you know, that, you know, all the schools I heard about earlier today, one of the speakers was a private, private or appropriate school. We're one of the few public schools that has offered full-time, basically full-time elementary programs. And, you know, we don't, we don't recognize our accomplishment enough, I don't think. And lastly, I think what Mrs. Crabtree talked about as far as change, you know, we're going to be in a constant state of change between now and the end. You know, it's, I wish we could provide somebody with a, you know, a guide, you know, this is going to happen, anything can happen. And, you know, I feel so glad that we're finally seeing the end, the light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully with the vaccine. So, you know, I hope we have complications that we're talking about in March or sometime about the changing we have to do to get back to full time. And that, that was a very good point that I think we're at. So, you know, I think we're doing the best we can, we're listening to all the people we can talk about, and I just think, you know, I'm very proud of what we've done, and I, I think we're giving recognition to the people we need to, and I think we're trying to focus on that a little more than we, we talk about, maybe we haven't talked about enough, but I certainly give that consideration every time you make a decision, as far as teachers and parents and, you know, everybody else involved in this process, the community, et cetera. So, you know, I think that summarizes where I'm at on these things, so thank you.
I'm going to limit my comments to teaching and learning. The, as Chris said, she and I were at Wheaton North today for a few hours, watching what goes on, watching the screens, talking to teachers. I'm so impressed by our teachers' agility with technology. They are doing things, a couple cameras going on, a few screens, dragging their screen to the projector so people can see it, turning screens around. They have really adapted their style to leveraging technology to create the best experience they can. The experience does not replace face-to-face, it just doesn't. And that's not my expectation. My expectation is that we're doing the best we can. I was just impressed by the teachers, they really impressed me today. The other thing Chris and I talked about is for the teaching and learning committee to go to more schools. So we want to go to elementary schools, we want to go to the middle schools, and that's not a one-time stop. We want to continuously engage and be part of that witness, I guess I'd say, so we can see firsthand how things are doing, so we can hear firsthand how things are going. The thing we talked about out in the parking lot after the end of our visit was, you know, the return to hybrid is not the end of our adapting these styles. We're going to continue to find ways, and Chris said this, find ways to get more kids in school, to open up more activities, to find other extracurricular, co-curricular activities within the guidelines we have, we've been given. And I, I just, it was a great day to be in the school and to see firsthand what teachers are doing, and it was just very impressive to me. Also, the move to bring streaming into middle school, I think that's a fantastic idea. It continues to enhance and allows us to get better. Again, not a replacing of in-person, but it allows us to get better at delivering instruction. We also heard about screen time in, we were talking to a few teachers, and the different points of view on how much screen time and how a day should be divided up. So Melissa gave us a few examples in her notes, and we heard today some, some teachers are using the whole 45 minutes for face, for screen time, and others are dividing it up into the time, you kind of see Melissa laid out. And so as teachers engage and interact, I think we'll see, there is a concern not only by the teachers, but also by parents about just too much screen time. And so this, this idea of adapting style where, you know, maybe it is 30 minutes of instruction and then 15 minutes of supporting and helping the students who need some additional help. And, you know, Chris and others said, that's how we teach in the classroom when we're, you know, two years ago, three years ago, there's an adaptive style in the room. You are not on live instructing the whole class and lecturing for 45 minutes or whatever the time period is. There's, you use that time flexibly into the needs of your room. And I think we heard today that teachers are going to use the technology in that same way, and I think that's really important. Lastly, this idea of, you know, listening, hearing, you know, I, when people send emails and say this thing, it's how they feel. So I'm not going to tell them how to feel, I'm going to say we're going to, I'm going to do better, you know, and helping you feel like I'm doing a better job at listening. So I'll just commit to be, you know, doing better, even though, I'm not quite sure what that means yet, but I'm not going to try to tell you how to feel about, you know, we're listening, because I, you know, obviously people feel differently, and so let's just find better ways. And I thought today was a really great example of it, so I was really pleased with this. So thanks for the invitation and the folks hosting us at the school, we appreciate that, and we see more trips to come, so thanks.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I know Jenna is next, but she's kind of watching through the live stream, and there's a little bit of a delay, so I'm not sure exactly, I'm just going to wait for Jenna to chime in, hopefully on the phone, to see if she has any final comments.
Just to mention too, Rob mentioned that we're going to go to other schools, we also want to hop on a virtual academy as well, so that we make sure we see what that looks like as well, too.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so my apologies to my colleagues and anybody who's listening, I'm having to do this remotely, which means I've had to listen to you on live streams, can't really hear you very clearly through my phone, I'm a little bit delayed, but I have to answer all of this. I just, I'll be concise, I want to echo a few things that I've heard from a few of you already, specifically Chris and Jim, who made the comment that we have to be able to remain flexible and adapt, and I would agree, there are two things we can't promise to anybody. We can't promise that there will be no changes, and we can't promise that anything will be easy, because those are the two things that we know, we have no control over. We have to be flexible at the time, and this is not going to be easy. It's not easy for the administration that's trying to figure it out, the teachers that are trying to implement the instructions, the parents who are trying to help their students or the students themselves. And I appreciate Rob saying I can't tell people how to feel, but I feel it is necessary to point out that the parents who are screaming at us so loud about what a terrible job everyone is doing, need to know that their children can hear and feel this attitude, and this cannot possibly be helping them. We all know that this is a horrible time. What we have to try and believe and tell each other is that this time will pass, we're going to get through this, but we all have to extend some grace. So I also believe in the administration, they're doing their best. I like what Chris was saying about needing not only more communication, but more consistent communication, because I would say the same thing. I didn't hear some teachers in any kind of great numbers until two hours before our last meeting, which was completely no time at all to absorb any of it. That would be why on my part, I have nothing to say about February 1st at our last meeting, because I hadn't even heard that suggestion till I walked into the meeting. And I think we have to have ongoing meaningful constructive communications, so we understand, we have no way of knowing what's going on in the classrooms unless we hear about it on a regular basis. And I do appreciate all of the teachers who have communicated with us, the very specific pointed comments about what is and isn't working and what is they're asking for, as opposed to a general rail about how everything is. I believe that surveillance testing is a good idea, because I truly believe that asymptomatic transmission is very real and is devastating to our community. For those who say that surveillance testing will result in people quarantining, my comment is, that's the precise point of surveillance testing, and the point of it is we're targeting those who most should quarantine. I share people's frustration with the 14-day quarantine that's set by the state and local health department, and I don't know if we've made any progress on those organizations lining up with the CDC's revised guidance on that and shortening that time period. I'm all for that. But I believe that if we say that any lie because we're quarantining people who would have no reason to believe they needed to be tested in the first place, that that is a valid reason to do it. And I, I am then told, and I believe that we have the resources to take care of that, and we can make that work without having a major impact on the rest of our budget, and I think that's something we should do better. I agree with Jim that if our administration believes that January 11th is a reasonable time to return, which allows us to get a little bit of work done before that, and allows us to ease into having things be a little smoother by the beginning of second semester, and so be it, because again, we can't promise that even if we waited until September 1st to return our students, that would be clear sailing from that moment forward. I'm pretty sure we can't guarantee there will be clear sailing at all this year, and it's just the way the world is right now. So I don't really have any questions, I just want to say I support the surveillance testing, and I support the administration's recommendation of January 11th.
Thank you, Jenna.
Yes.
So one of the challenges I have as board president is talking last, and, I mean, the comments that the board has shared tonight are really hard to follow. I think everybody's comments have been so thoughtful, passionate, caring for kids and staff, and, I mean, I can, I think everybody feels the same way I do, that the last five and a half months have been the hardest months of my life. It's just been absolutely brutal. But as I said at the last meeting, we have to provide hope, and I think this solution does things, these recommendations does, do, does things that's going to provide hope to our students, our families, hopefully hope to our teachers, that we're listening to them, we're trying to accommodate things, to make it as easy as possible. We know that it's hard, we know that it's added work, we know it's super stressful, we know it's not what anybody's familiar or comfortable with, we know it's not perfect. But the bottom line is, we're here for kids, and I think other people have said that, and we need to put kids in the opportunity in school for those that choose it for all kinds of reasons. We all hear it, we read it, we see it, and so, you know, I came into the last meeting wanting January 4th, but I'm recognizing the challenges that that would bring. I think January 11th is the best date that checks all the boxes, I'm happy with that I, hopefully the parents that are watching this, I'm sure there's a couple thousand online, can work with their kids and get them in position for that first week back to continue remote and then be comfortable with the January 11th return, and hopefully have confidence and hope that we're going to do everything possible to stay in school until June 10th. You know, there's going to be changes, but one of the changes I don't want to see is going back remotely. In terms of the testing, you know, it's another layer of mitigation that I think is going to help make our buildings and our people safer, and I believe there's valuable, there's value in that. I'm surprised when I read that people want to put a price on how, how much is too much to make people safe. And so I'm totally supportive of this, I'm confident that we can afford it, and we've taken the steps over the past heck decade of financial management to put ourselves in a position. And while it's the goal to, to have an impact on our schools and have super local data that's going to hopefully keep us in person, there is a benefit to our community. I can't quantify it, but schools have always played a significant role in the community. We play it, there's so many different examples, and so if we can do something with our taxpayers' money that benefits the entire community and hopefully makes this virus a little incrementally shorter, then we should do it. I'm totally supportive of that, so it's not easy, none of this has been easy, it's been hard on everybody. I mean, Dr. Schuler, you and your team, Yeoman's efforts since the beginning of July, super respect for everybody. And so I totally embrace and endorse the recommendations you've made to us. You have, I think you have our full board's support, and the recommendations you've made in terms of the target date of January 11th to bring kids back, and I'll support the testing proposal as presented. So those are all my kind of closing comments. Anybody else before we take some votes? Okay, so we'll go back to our two action items. The first is approval of agreement with Safeguard Surveillance. Do I have a motion and a second to approve and authorize the superintendent to sign the services agreement for COVID-19 surveillance testing with Safeguard Surveillance LLC, substantially before presented by the superintendent and subject to final approval by the board's attorney and superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mr. Hanlon, would you call the vote and take Jenna last?
Correct. Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Hanlon, yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Erickson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was clear.
Okay, the, the action item to set January 11th as the return date has been approved, and so be there, being there no further action, and coming for a board and open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree? to the in-person hybrid plans for middle school and high school students and staff as presented?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Mr. Hanlon, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon, yes. Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Erickson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was quick.
Okay, the, the action item to set January 11th as the return date has been approved. And so be there, be there no further action, and coming for a board and open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Booten. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Happy holidays.